A little bit down on members, we do have, I think, a fourth member coming, but we have three of us, that is a quorum. The first item on our agenda is a public hearing to consider an amendment to a previously granted special use permit for a cottage. Could I have someone to speak for the applicant?
Good evening, Chairperson and members of the planning board. My name is Jessica Zalen. I am with the law firm of Cuddy and Fader. I am here tonight appearing on behalf of the applicant, 59 West Patent Road LLC. I am joined by Brendan Coburn of the Brooklyn Studio, who is the project architect. And we are here tonight in connection with the applicant's request to amend the special use permit that was previously issued by this board, the special use permit and site plan approval that was previously issued by this board for the installation of a replacement cottage on the applicant's property at 59 West Patent Road. As you may recall from our visits to this board last year and just last month, the board reviewed the applicant's proposal to demolish an existing studio and an existing barn cottage, barn, yes, a studio, excuse me, a studio and a cottage that are existing on the property and to replace them with new structures, a new studio and a new cottage. This board granted approval last November. And we are back because when, as the applicant went through the design process, essentially, he just realized he wanted it, the cottage to be slightly differently configured. The cottage is going to be in the exact same place as it previously was, it's just going to be flipped. So the doorway on one side is now on the other side, the windows on one side are now on the other side, et cetera. This requested amendment would not affect the project's overall compliance with the town code provisions related to special use permits for cottages or any other conditions of this board's approval of the project. There are no changes to the proposed studio design, all of the changes are related to the cottage itself. It'll be flipped so that, yeah, it'll be flipped and some internal alterations are contemplated, but there's no changes to the overall location, height, elevation, footprint, or gross floor area of that structure beyond what was previously approved. I will just turn it over to Brendan so he can give you an overview of what's changed.
And this is a public hearing, so if there's some way we could orient that a little bit so the public could see the drawings, or if they could get picked up by the camera.
Right, so here, okay.
Would it help if we shared a screen to show the drawings on?
That might be a better idea.
Natalia of the Brooklyn Studio is also with us, so if Natalia, you can make the...
I just requested, okay.
Great. That way, easier to see for the general population.
That's better.
Yeah, please let me know which page you would like to see, but I've got them all here.
Is this the red one, the red line?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so I'm Brendan Coburn, I'm the architect for this project. As Jessica said, all we have done is flip the plan 180 degrees. The one-story screen porch was formerly on the north, sorry, south side of the house, and now it's being moved to the north side of the house. You can see that the location is unchanged, the footprint hasn't changed at all, the square footage hasn't changed at all. The client simply decided he'd rather have the porch facing the tennis court. And that's really the extent of the changes. We did some rearrangements inside of the floor plan, and we added a stairway and an areaway that's below grade to get into a gym and a downstairs sauna. But otherwise, the thing is the same.
Okay, well, this is a public hearing, so are there any comments or questions from members of the audience, or from anybody that's on the Zoom? I think maybe we should take down the shared screen, yeah. Is there anybody on the Zoom that would like to speak? Anybody in the audience who would like to speak? Anyone on the planning board?
Seems like a minor change.
It does. What's the, where are the surrounding houses?
There's a house over here. We don't, I don't have that thing, but...
Natalia, do you have, are you able to, actually, I'm not even sure if it's visible in the plan set, but the overall site...
The house is not visible on the plan set, but yeah. I have sent you previously something that shows where the house is, and I can find it. It will just take me a minute.
That's okay.
What kind of distance are we talking about?
The cottage, it...
The distance from the nearest neighbors?
Oh, I believe it, from the cottage to the nearest neighbors, I believe it's about 250 feet. The cottage to the nearest property line is 112 and change feet, which is 62 feet more than the required setback distance.
No, I mean, the only change that I could see having an impact, but it doesn't seem to me that at those distances it would, is that you're moving what could be the center of activity outward from the property rather than inward, but this is not a, it's the center of activity in a small apartment, not...
Yeah, the porch is very small.
It is also, it's a guest house for, used by the main property owner's family when they come to visit. So there are times that the center of activity would be the main residence for a gathering of that type of group. I will also, Brendan, if you could pull up that landscaping sheet, I just want to note that we did contemplate that we are facing that porch towards a different direction. In the last iteration of the plans, there was significant landscaping proposed, both along my client's side of the property line and an escrow account set up to allow his adjacent property neighbor to put landscaping on his side of the property line. We've now also added a hedge that goes around the outside of the porch to just provide any further sound attenuation that, to address any concerns, essentially.
That certainly seems like a significant amount of mitigation.
That was, that was our hope. That's what we were intending to do here.
So what is the will of the board?
So what we would be doing is approving, if we approve this, an amendment to...
An amendment to the special permit that we've already given.
Given, and that, yeah, I think we should approve that.
I agree. I mean, the level of mitigation, I would argue, is above and beyond. There is nothing, you know, material other than the positioning of it in terms of size, scale, and to some extent, to every extent you're within your rights from a property distance perspective and setback. So I see no reason why we would not grant the amendment to the previously granted special use permit, so I'm happy to second the motion.
Yeah, and so we have a motion and a second. In terms of discussion, I would point out that the, this would seem to meet the different characteristics of the special use permit to the same extent that the original did. It serves a community need and service. It's still an extra apartment, and that is one of the reasons we have this ordinance that allows this. The location and size of the use and nature and intensity of the operations hasn't changed at all. The location of the building hasn't changed, and the orientation has changed minimally and without an impact, and as my colleague said, with a great deal of mitigation provided. The operations in connection with it will be exactly the same as they were before, and the parking areas haven't changed at all. So it does seem to me that it covers all of the issues that are important in terms of the special permit. Does anyone else have any comments on the motion? Second?
I agree, but if I may, I'll close the public hearing, or move to?
Thank you very much.
So I will move to close the public hearing.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, thank you for that.
My pleasure.
I do believe that we don't need to do seeker for this because it's an amendment. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? You have it.
Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
The next item on our agenda is another public hearing, this one to consider a steep slope application in connection with the construction of a new residence pursuant to town code 102 with a stormwater pollution prevention plan pursuant to town code 103. The property is located at 48 Hillside Avenue, and the owner applicant is Wolf Lukarath? Did I say that right?
Lukarath, yes. Good evening. Tim Allen Bibbo Associates. With me today, Teo Sequenza of Sequenza Architects, and Wolf Lukarath is with me. We are proposing a single-family residence on one acre at 48 Hillside Avenue. This proposal was before the board back in 2022. It was approved as part of the subdivision for McCrossan M2 Realty. At the subdivision level, we had shown a house that could be built on the property. That house consisted of about 1,800 square feet, a little, 1,800-plus square feet in footprint size. It was a two-story structure being proposed or shown on that plan at the time. This house is a larger footprint, roughly 4,000 square feet, but in terms of massing and what have you, it's a single-story residence, so it's a larger footprint, but it's only one story as proposed. The proposed site will have a pool and a courtyard in the back area. The driveway is essentially close to what was originally approved. This board had asked for a comparison plan. There's a plan that shows the overlay of this plan versus what was proposed at the subdivision. We are on receipt of comments from the neighbors, few neighbors, and also Jim Hahn's memo of last week. There's a little more work to do in looking at the neighbors' comments, and while we don't propose to change the house too much, the drainage, if you recall, at the subdivision level, we had tested an area in the back for cul-de-sacs, and based on discussions with the town, the public works department, those cul-de-sacs were taken off the plan. Given the fact that they weren't needed by code, we were not disturbing more than an acre, and we're still not disturbing more than an acre. But given the concerns of the town engineer and the neighbors, we proposed to put those cul-de-sacs back on the plan. Those cul-de-sacs will take the roof drainage from portions of the house and infiltrate prior to discharge to the drainage system that's being proposed. All along through our discussions with the town and the public works department, the intention was always to connect to Coggin Lane eventually. That will still be a connection, but it'll be, the stormwater, one-year storm will be infiltrated and the flows will be reduced through the cul-de-sac system. That'll be on the next planned submittal.
Why was the cul-de-sac system withdrawn previously?
Given it wasn't over an acre of land, it was not required by the DEC nor the town code. And we were putting in a lot of drainage at the owner's expense to convey the drainage, and it was somewhat of a negotiation that the cul-de-sacs would not be proposed at that time. But given the concerns, we will put them back on the plan. As a matter of fact, I believe I talked to Will at Hahn's office, and all that was tested back at the subdivision level. So we'll propose those on the next iteration of the plan.
Would I be right in saying that one of the differences between this plan and the previous one is that there is more impermeable surface on this plan than on the previous one?
Given the footprint of the house, yes. The footprint of the house is larger.
So there is some reason for producing a little more stormwater management?
Well, we provided calculations that the drainage system being proposed could convey the 25-year storm without a problem down to Coggin Lane, but this will be an extra mitigation for the stormwater.
I think that's important, since we're all realizing that the 25-year storm happens about three times a summer these days.
Correct. So we understand that Hahn's office has not recommended approval yet, so we know this board cannot approve this project tonight anyway. So we have a little more work to do in responding to Hahn's comments. I'll just let Teo walk you through the elevation of the house and how that sits on the lot. But it's important, being it's one story, it's not as the former house, which is right in red in this comparison plan. You see the smaller footprint, but again, three stories sitting right at the southern boundary of this property. It was a much larger profile compared to this house. So I'll turn it over to Teo.
Thank you. Good evening, all members. As Tim indicated, the house is, of course, larger in footprint, but if there was an FAR, it would be equivalent of what could be done in a two-and-a-half-story residence in this lot. The proposal here is actually to have a one-level house. Given the fact that the property slopes down, we are able to create a walkout. So it's one story with a walkout. All the houses that you have in the neighborhood, as you can see here, coming down from Hillside, you know, that house that you see there is a one-and-a-half story with a walkout. The ones coming down, here you see there are two stories, and the two stories in here, two and a half stories actually here, with a walkout as well, as you can see back in here. So the house that we have in front of you is, it's actually gentle in its bulk. And also, the house, given the recesses that it has, for example, in here at the neighbor, as you see highlighted there with red, although the footprint is longer, but the exposure to the street is shorter, and it will be rather gentle, in my opinion. This is what you will be looking in here. And opposed to seeing a house that is sitting up on top of the hill, now this house that we're proposing actually is at street level, because the walkout will be on natural grade at street level. So the elevation that is facing the street is here, very gentle, and in the other side, as we have two frontiers, on the other frontier, this will be the appearance, actually, what I am highlighting there with the green. So again, the footprint is larger because we have a one-story house.
Why, what was the reasoning that you went from a two-story on the subdivision plan to a larger, more spread-out one-story?
Yeah, that, the subdivision plan was a generic layout that the developer had for approval. So it really didn't show a house that was buildable yet. Now we have a homeowner, actually, my client here, Mr. Lukarath, who is looking to relocate back and bring his family to Bedford. So it's his home. It's not on spec home, it's his residence.
Well, this is supposed to be a public hearing. Have you, have you finished your presentation?
Thank you.
Could I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Just a moment.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Going to open the public hearing at this point to comments from the public. Are there any comments from members of the public in the audience? We have had some correspondence. Is there, are there any comments from...
Hand up.
Oh, would you like to, could you come up to the microphone, please? Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I'm John Lynch. I live on Congdon Lane, so right below the road, the dirt road that's maintained by the town, who owns it is making question, but maintained by the town, it washes out frequently, as you said, Deirdre, you know, the 100-year storm is happening like six times a year at least, and we get the fallout on Congdon from the stone and gravel that come down when there's heavy rainstorms. Drainage is subpar, so I think there's, I want to reinforce some of the comments I saw from one of my neighbors expressing concern about how the water flows on Congdon. Right now, the culvert, the drainage, if you can even call it that, is subpar and kind of lacking. The water is, in heavy rain, is frequently out on Congdon Lane and not in the, you know, the kind of the drain area. It frequently fills with sand and leaves and debris, and that causes more water to rush out on Congdon in addition to what's coming down from where the proposed house is going to be. So I just want to kind of put on the record, and I think some of my neighbors have, among their concerns, the same concern, that any movement, the placement of the house, and Wolf was nice enough to come over and kind of give an overview of what he was trying to do. So I kind of get that, but I want to be on record to say that disrupting that hillside by putting a new house there, let's all make sure that there's a plan in place to understand the, no pun intended, the downstream impact of doing that.
Obviously, the drainage is a major issue and one the town engineer is taking very seriously to make sure that what is designed will do the job.
Yeah. The town and Kevin Winant team probably have the record and document to say so, but my guess would be that the town is up to repair that road and the, kind of the potholes and the ditches that are created by heavy rain, the stone and dirt that washes down the hillside. My guess is the town repairs that 20 times a year. It's not three, it's a lot. So whatever's going on up above, we're concerned that it's going to have an impact on that road and what happens on Congdon, because I'm literally right at the bottom of that hillside. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from members of the public in the audience here? Anyone on the Zoom? If you can put the little hand up on the Zoom, that would help. If you can't do that, just shout out.
I'd like to make a couple of comments.
Go ahead, if you introduce yourself, please.
Hi, I'm Paul Chambers. I live on 51 Hillside, right across from where the house is going up. And I had three concerns, but one's already been addressed, with the drainage, so I won't go over that again. And Wolf had come over to the house to show me the plans, and that was very nice of him, and we welcome him and his wife to the neighborhood. I think he's going to like the group of people on the block. But there's just two other things, I hope I don't irk them when I bring this up, but one is, if you look at the footprint of that house, you can see the footprints of some of the other houses. This, it's a beautiful house, you can see from the plans. It's just that it's about twice the size of the other houses on the block, and it's just going to kind of stick out a lot, doesn't fit in with the block. And the other concern is if you look at the side that was just shown on the plan, which, yes, it's technically one story, but with that cutout, it looks like a two-story house from the south side. Because of the bizarre boundaries, the southern end of the property is the southern side of the road there, and that is right where the Gullins lawn and driveway are. So it's not a variance, it is 30 feet back, but because it's going to be, the road is part of the property, the house is going to look to be like, estimating here, 10, 15 feet from the road. So the question I just had about that is, I'm sure they don't want to look at the Gullins house being so close than normal and near with the Gullins, so would they have any plans for some landscaping that would create a wall so that it wouldn't be so in the face of each other? That's all I have to say. Yes.
Is that it? Thank you. Are there any other comments from members of the audience or from the Zoom? Members of the board, comments at this point?
I don't think we've received a planting plant, right?
I don't think we've seen one yet.
And I think a plant, you know, having some sort of native plants incorporated would be a great idea, both as far as the view shed, but also, and for your family to have some plants that are, you know, a garden separating you from the road, but also it should help with drainage, too.
Yeah, I'm sure we'll incorporate that. We also want to cover the medical building on the one side there, you know, so we definitely want to, I guess, kind of cover that, and then, you know, I'm sure the next time we could definitely have a... And then, you know, I'm sure the next time we could definitely have a landscaping plant.
We would encourage those to be heavily native plants.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
Yes, we do have a definite thing about that. Any other comments? The board has said that we weren't able to get to it before this meeting, but we will before the next meeting, that we would like to do a site visit. It may be a matter of some of us going down individually to see it. But just to, it's helpful now that we've seen the footprint and the general outline of it to try to see how it will sit in the neighborhood. So we will try to get there sometime in the next couple of weeks. I don't think there's anything else that we can really do tonight.
I move that we close the public hearing then?
Right, sir.
Should we close the public hearing or leave it up until next session?
I think we should adjourn the public hearing.
I move that we adjourn the public hearing.
So is that a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
I move that we adjourn the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, the public hearing is adjourned. And we will, actually, did we adjourn it to a particular date though?
To the next session.
To the next meeting, yeah. Okay, so the public hearing is adjourned until the next meeting. And hopefully we'll both have, this board will have seen the property and we will have a more definitive answer from the town engineer as well. So I think that's all we can do tonight.
Okay, thank you. And you'll get backdoor sunup meeting for the sidewalk?
Yes, yeah. We're going to try and settle that tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on our agenda is another public hearing. This one to consider an application for a two lot subdivision pursuant to Town Code 107. The property is at 10 Hickory Lane in Bedford, and the owner applicant is Colleen Cannavan. And I think on this one, it makes sense for us just to open the public hearing at the beginning. So could I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hello, my name is Colleen Cannavan. I am looking to subdivide two lots, one of which is a two bedroom cottage as well as a pool house. The other has a four bedroom house. Both are on one acre lots in a one acre zone. Each lot meets the requirements for lot coverage. All variance have been granted by the zoning board, five of which were pre-existing legal non-conforming. The remaining four border lots A and B would not have any adverse effect or negative impact on any neighboring lots since they are contained between the two properties. Each lot has its own driveway and entrance. There are no improvements at this time or changes to the property other than the new lot line between lots A and B.
And this, these properties had once been separate, yes?
Once have been.
Had been separate?
Yes, they were joined one time.
This is a public hearing. Are there any comments or questions from members of the audience? Comments or questions from members of the public on Zoom? Again, if you want to speak, you can just shout out on the Zoom. Going once? Any comments or questions from members of the board?
The development histories that the homes were developed in their present form at the time that the lots were subdivided, prior to their merger, right? The homes were built on separate lots and then the lots were merged together?
Yeah, they were individual lots.
Great. I don't have any concerns.
You did need variances, but you got them from the ZBA, I gather, last?
Yes, last week.
Yeah, were there conditions on that?
Just shrubs, if I were to separate the lots. That was it.
Any other comments or questions?
We would love those to be native shrubs.
Yes, I am. I took note.
Okay, one more time before I ask to close the public hearing. Any further comments from members of the audience, either on Zoom?
Wait, hi, sorry, I actually do have a comment now. I live at 4 Hickory. My name is Paul Levine. And I actually had no issue until the native shrubs. I'm wondering where the shrubs would go because we're on one end of the property line. And if there were shrubs going across, that would?
No, it wouldn't be between us. It would be behind me.
Okay.
It wouldn't impact you. But honestly, you know, if I were to sell the house, somebody could put shrubs there. That's their choice.
Right, but that's on the, that's on the, yeah, on the line. I just want to, I don't, wouldn't have, you know, that would, there'd be a new owner. I just kind of, as it stands now, it wouldn't want to.
I mean, it's always worked because we never had issues with each other.
Yeah, oh, exactly, exactly.
Right, and I never had issues with my prior neighbor. But if somebody else were to come in, they could do whatever they want. I have no control, but the shrubs, they were.
Yeah, and the reason I mentioned the shrubs was because you had said that the zoning board had already asked for them.
Yeah, behind the property, they wanted more of a definitive line.
So is, does that satisfy your?
Yes.
Sorry, okay. Any other comments from members of the board? To my mind, this sounds pretty straightforward. It's not having any impact.
Returning to the original condition as designed, so.
Exactly.
And as the chair said, no impact on the community.
Right. So could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. In terms of seeker, this would be a type two action. Could I have a motion?
I move that we find it's a type two action.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of it being determined to be a type two action? Aye. All opposed? Okay, it is a type two action in seeker. We have nothing else that we need to do there. If we were to approve this, it would be, we'd be including the ZBA conditions from their resolution as well as the standard subdivision conditions. And the other condition would be that any changes to the originally approved plot in future will require a resubmission of materials. So if you decide to make any changes in the layout of the subdivision, you have to come back to us.
Okay, that's fine.
Any other conditions that are appropriate? Any further discussion? We have a motion before us.
Move to approve?
No, no, we have the motion. I thought we did. Oh, that's right. I said if we had a motion, I would suggest those conditions. You're correct.
Right, so I was saying, I move to approve with the conditions that were just.
And could I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? You have it.
Good luck.
Thank you.
It's been a long week. And it's only Monday. The next item on our agenda is a continuation of a public hearing to consider an application for a special use permit for the conversion of an existing barn into a two bedroom cottage pursuant to Town Code 125-79.1. The address is at 20 Cantado Street, Katona. The owner applicant is John Scambos. Could I have a motion to reopen the public hearing?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Shall we reopen the public hearing?
Aye.
Good evening, Madam Chairperson, members of the board. P. Daniel Hollis, Gettinger Waldinger, Monte Leone, Gashew and Hollis, 118 North Bedford Road, Mount Kisco, New York, attorneys for the applicant. We were here on April 14th and were not able to reach a vote because of the fact that we needed two variances from the zoning board with regard to conditions of the special permit. We also needed two other variances from the zoning board because of dimensional issues. One, a side yard, by virtue of the fact that dormers on the second floor were encroaching more into the side yard setback. And also coverage variance because of the fact that instead of leaving, required two cars to be parked for the new accessory cottage. Outside, we were going to enclose them in a garage. So that's what put us up and over where we were on coverage. So on May 1st, we obtained those, all of those variances, plus the two variances, one because our cottage is more than 800 square feet, but it's a building that's been there since 1983. And second of all, because the ratio of the square footage of our building, 1,720 square feet exceeds the 1,130 square feet. That would be 25% of the main residence. All of the other conditions of the special permit, the other eight, we match up with favorably. I could go through all of them. But I think last month, we had the, showed you the plan and Teo's plan and some photographs showing the impact on the neighborhood, et cetera. We've had no opposition from any of the neighbors. And as I said before, the Scambos', and Mrs. Scambos is a Burbank. She's been in town, her family, not her, but her family for 100 years. And this is intergenerational planning where Mr. and Mrs. Scambos will be moving into the cottage with their adult son and their daughter and her husband and their children will be moving into the main house so that a family can retire in place and not disrupt the family and have to move away. So I think it's very visionary on their part. And I wish more families would be able to do it. And if they could do it, would do it. For any other questions, I'm glad to answer them. Teo's here with me.
This is a public hearing, so are there any questions from anyone in the audience? Any questions from anyone on the Zoom? Any questions from anyone at the table?
No, very much forward.
I think we asked any questions that we really had any questions about last time. So if we did consider approving this?
Obviously, the cottage that we already have will be decommissioned. I'll just repeat that for the record. We don't, obviously, we won't have two cottages. It'll only be the one.
Yeah, and that's an existing cottage. So there really is very little physically happening on the property, which I think would deem it a type two for seeker. So could I have a motion regarding seeker?
So move that it's a type two.
The second? Any further discussion of it being a type two? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? So if we were to go forward?
Should we close the public hearing?
I guess I didn't do that yet.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Since I keep forgetting to close the public hearing, maybe this means I'm not opposed. I don't know. Approve with? I guess the only conditions that I can think of would be the standard conditions for the special use permit. And site plan and the ZBA. Were there any conditions on the ZBA resolution?
No conditions from the ZBA other than an approval from this board tonight.
And the cottage's special use, yep.
Is there any further discussion? Do we have, well, first of all, do I have a motion with those conditions?
Move to approve with those conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
And Chair, I'm sorry. I'm just going to add in another condition. Just obviously, the original cottage would be decommissioned to allow for the second one. I know you said on the record, but I'm going to put it in your resolution as well.
Oh, fine.
Just letting you know. And if the board would include that as a condition, I appreciate it.
Yes.
Yes.
To amend to include that.
So you did the original?
Second to amend.
Yeah, okay. So we have a condition that, we have a resolution that is now amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? You have it.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Good luck.
You too.
Thank you, Azwer.
And the next item on our agenda is another continued public hearing to consider an application for a special use permit for the expansion of a previously granted special use permit for a cottage pursuant to Town Code 125-79.1. The address is at 449 Gard Hill Road. And the owner applicants are Mark and Joyce Shielwitz.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the planning board. Stephen Helms with the Helms Group Architects. We were the four year board last month on April 14th with this project. It's an existing one bedroom cottage. However, there's two bedrooms in the cottage. And the previous owner converted a loft into a bedroom. We are right now in before the health department to get that straightened out, either expanding the system for a two bedroom. Or what we did, we took a wall out, a five foot opening, and we went on record with a letter to the health department. We're waiting their response. So that's where we are with the health department. We were successful in the zoning board on May 1st with this application. We got the special use permit for the, increasing the floor area on the second floor, a couple of hundred square feet. Basically, converted a vaulted ceiling into a flat ceiling so my client could have more floor area for a office exercise area. It's an 11 acre site. It's a cottage. It's been there since the mid 80s. He's owned it for about five years. He'd like to have his kids use it. And we're renovating it with additions and alterations, which is all as of right with a building permit. Obviously, we haven't started. We needed to go before the zoning board and your board. So the only condition that I'm aware of that the zoning board had was a health department approval before they can issue a building permit and your approval for this special use permit. It's basically it.
Could I have a motion to open the public hearing, to continue the public hearing?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Is there, do I have any comments from members of the audience? Any comments from anyone on Zoom? Any comments from anyone on the board? Could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So again, the one piece of business that had to be taken care of before this, before we could move on it, was the variance which you've gotten at this point. If we approved it, it again would be with the standard conditions. And this would seem to meet all of those. There is no impact. It's essentially an existing building. So you can't really say it's out of sync with what's there because it's part of what's there. Any conditions from the ZBA would be included, but there, I gather, are none other than the health department. And we would include that as well as a condition, the approval of the health department. It seems to me with the health department approval, there's an either or issue about what happens with bedrooms. Can we? Can we approve it with both-bedroom possibilities? Open?
Sure, subject to final approval by the health department.
Yeah, that's, I mean, the health department is the...
That's the last final.
But they shouldn't have to come back to us if they'd...
Actually, we hired Tim Allen from Bibbo Associates to do some preliminary testing to see if the system is capable of being enlarged or expanded with the soils and we're waiting for that result. If not, we're going to go, which we had submitted to the health department, removing and making a five-foot opening so the room is not deemed private or a bedroom and the cottage will remain as classified as a one-bedroom cottage. But it's subject to health department.
Yeah. So what I was trying to do was if it turned out that it didn't have to be a one-bedroom cottage, that you would be able to do that without coming back and...
We'd appreciate that, yeah.
So could I have a motion with those conditions?
Some. Second.
The motion and the second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? You have it.
Thank you. I'll be back.
Okay. And now finally, no more public hearings for the day, I believe. The next item on our agenda is to consider a site plan application pursuant to town code 125-88 to develop a 15-unit apartment building with onsite parking, landscaping and related appurtenances. And I believe it also includes three, three of the units will be affordable units. It will be located at 150 Bedford Road. The owner is 150 Bedford Road LLC and the applicant is Stephen Helms of the Helms Group.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Again, for the record, Stephen Helms with the Helms Group, representing 150 Bedford Road LLC, contract vendee. I have one of the partners, Mark Pacucci, here tonight with us.
Welcome.
His partner Jamie Provenzano is out of town and could not be at the meeting tonight. This property is on the east side of 117, north of the new apartment building that just went in, actually on the north side of a little white building that I was involved with a couple of years ago. It's a vacant lot, a little over a half acre, 23,334 square feet to be exact. It has been used over the years for overflow parking for the tractor business next door, airway. It is a separate tax lot. My client, I must say, they do have some interest on the adjoining property as again a contract vendee. Is that fair to say, Mark? But this is a separate application. Again, it's a preliminary site plan application. We are proposing a three-story building with a gambrel-style roof with a full basement. Building will be completely sprinkled. The parking will be in the back of the property, handicap parking up front. We do have a front and a rear entrance. We, the building will consist of six two-bedroom units and three, nine one-bedroom, total of 15 apartments. Three, by right, would need to be affordable on this project. We do comply with building setbacks and so forth, height. However, we are before the zoning board for two variances. One is a, in a CB zone district, the maximum square foot for a building of a single use cannot exceed 4,000 square feet. This footprint is 4,600, so we exceed that by 600 square feet. We also are deficient in parking. We need 26 parking, off-street parking. We have 23. That's without even counting any compact cars, but we didn't go that route. We just, the facts speak for themselves. So we are deficient by three, so we need two, to seek two variances with the zoning board. Hopefully, one, their next agenda, but we did make an application to them. I do like to show you, is the microphone, I can...
The plan down here demonstrates with the color. Here's the first floor, front entrance and a rear entrance. This is a one-bedroom with light and ventilation on both exposures. Another one-bedroom back here. This is a two-bedroom, a two-bedroom and a one-bedroom. Same plan on each floor level. We have an elevator service, four stops. We have fire stairs. We have a full basement, which will be used, will have storage for the tenants. Will also create a laundry room. It's not partitioned off, but we made reference to it. Again, this is a preliminary mechanical sprinkler, mechanical-type rooms down in the basement. Just to give you some context of the elevation. This is the front. This is set out forward and that's set back. Fortunately, I don't have a rendering ready yet or a contextual model, but we'd like to do a gambrel-style roof with boxed-out rakes, probably a seven-inch shingle on the building. I'd like to incorporate some stone, nice windows, probably a six-over-one design. And it's pretty much it with respect to the finishes. We do have a... We'd like to use bollards for our lighting in the parking lot. We did not have a photometric plan yet, nor a landscaping plan developed at this point. We are in the process of doing some soil boring testing to make sure we know what we're dealing with out there in the field. Also have a site engineer that we're talking to because we're going to need to get into complete site engineering drawings for this project, grade analysis, stormwater management, all of those good things there. There's, the site slopes from front to back. It's quite a slope in the back. It's not steep slopes, however, it's going to necessitate a retaining wall and that'll all be addressed on subsequent drawings. But again, my client is a contract vendee. We'd like to find out, you know, how your board looks at this project. We have a fire truck access road here. And Mark, do you have anything to add to the project? Oh, yeah, yeah. The building, I must say, the building coverage as we designed it is 19.8. We're allowed 20%. So we did fit this building within the site, so we're not reaching for any crazy coverage calculations and our impervious is under. We included all the parking and parking areas. We were going to do pervious pavers here, but I'm not sure if the town recognizes pervious or ask, or impervious, but we decided let's, by devil's advocate, use worst case and we do comply and we're well under the 80%. Setbacks, we meet, height and so forth. It's a great spot for the apartment building. I did an analysis with parking with other type of uses, i.e. a restaurant and apartments above, but that required 60 spaces, offices, no apartments. It just, this is the least amount of parking for this use in this location.
And we need, we need the housing too, so it's not a bad thing.
Yeah, we also have approval from Kevin Wind for the sewer capacity. That was obtained back in February for this project, which was one of the first requirements we wanted to get and have that capacity approved for this project.
I mean, I think this is one of the places in town that's, that's not serving its best use at the moment and that could make an excellent location for housing. So it's, I'm glad to see it starting in that direction. Comments from members of the... No, if we are going to put housing in the center of town, and I think we have to, this is the way we want to do it, not... I'll just say, not the way some others have suggested it be done at the rate of high-rise apartments in the center of Catona and Bedford Hills. This is something that's on a scale that's, that matches the rest of the community and I think that's what we're looking for.
Kind of in scale with the building across from the mobile station that I was involved with several years ago, that type of massing, some of the materials.
I'll be interested to see the drawings of how it's all going to mesh together there. What are you going to do with where the, the building fronts versus the...
Sorry?
Where the building fronts versus the sidewalk?
On this project?
How's it going to fit in along? We've got two buildings now at different angles to each other. This is another one. Eventually, we're going to have to think about that whole stretch of road.
Yeah.
Cohesively.
Yeah. Actually, I had met with Jessica and Al a couple of months ago. We had looked at a project with a linear design, two-story going east to west and the parking was on the side and I think Jessica's comments were they would like to have the buildings create a street scape, if you will, of buildings. We are kind of parallel with the property line, although the island is skewed. The island can be, it's a town right-of-way, so whatever improvements we do there, we're going to extend a concrete sidewalk, landscape it, but I believe we have to go to the town board for, get their approval on that, work within that area.
I just think we should all be thinking about that. We've talked about it a little bit with the two previous projects there and we haven't yet come to a conclusion and I think we need to start thinking about the design a little bit more holistically.
Our overall height will conform with the town code, 40 feet. We won't exceed 45 if there's a chimney element there, so we're under that.
No, I'm not talking about the height of the, I'm talking about literally the street scape.
Yeah.
The chimney element is a walking chimney or...
That's the bulkhead.
Elevator for run.
It's a bulkhead for the elevators.
For the elevator.
But it's not going to be like a fourth-story penthouse type of thing.
It's not going to be gigantic.
No, no. Actually, a fellow in town has suggested that there could be some landscaping with the, the island, if you will. So when you're coming north to create a landscape buffer, which I'm happy to talk to Jessica about, in front of the three buildings, actually, it could give it a nice buffer, if you will, between the buildings and the road.
That might be something that would accomplish the kind of thing I've been thinking about.
You got some uniformity with some landscaping there that, you know, buildings just don't look so new right there.
Well, if it could be something that would give that still kind of country feel that you have for the path that goes south from, towards Bedford Hills.
Then it's still an improvement over the current condition of the property.
Yeah, no, no, it's, it's...
Or also continuing the hamlet feel.
Yeah.
Catona a little further and making it a walking, you know, as you said.
I think, I think that's what we're really kind of hoping is that eventually that part of town, instead of being seen as a 1950s, automobile-oriented outskirts of towns, it will actually be seen as part of the hamlet itself. And this is the right direction for that.
What about guest, I know parking's going to be an issue. You already a little bit short. What is the thought on overflow parking, guest parking?
Well, we do, by right on the bedrooms, I believe you need one, one parking space per unit and then one-half space per bedroom. So by code, we need 26. I don't know how your board or if it's the zoning board purview to, if we can do compact parking because we can decrease the deficiency if we take the parking on the east side and make them a little tighter because the parking, quite frankly, in the village is pretty tight, eight and a half, not nine and a half. You might be able to pick up a spot or two. These are nine and a half by 20 or nine and a half by 18 with a curb stop. But if we can use compact spaces to offset that deficiency.
But you also don't really have any room left for snow removal then?
We have refuges in the back and we have snow removal. We showed that on our survey there. We'll certainly table that and address that item. Is the planning board, who oversees the compact parking?
The planning board has the jurisdiction. The subjectivity to grant that at their discretion. However, there are various regulations you have to follow in order to show that a full parking plan can be achieved prior to this board being able to grant any sort of compact parking on site. I can give you the chapter and verse on that, so you can look into it, but it would be this board, not the zoning board. However, for any parking deficiencies per code, you are still required to get said variances from the zoning board.
Okay.
Jessica, would you recommend compact parking or just a deficit, but parking that's more facile for the people who's in...
We have to see if they can, how they can even accommodate it, if it's, if that's the case.
We also buy parking passes too, if that's permitted. Also, the driveway has been, subsequent to filing, it's been, going to be increased in width to 20 feet, not 15. Fire apparatus after meeting with the building inspector preliminary on this one. And there was 10 or 12 items that Jessica brought to my attention that we would have to fully address prior to our next step.
Can the fire truck whoop around or have to...
No, it's a dead, it's, I'm treating it as a dead end. We have over 150 feet where a truck can come in and have full access to the back of the building, the front of the building.
But it's a backup, yeah.
Yeah, we did a study with the building on the south side. I don't know if that was in the package that was sent, but personally, I like the building further away from the white building because otherwise it would only be 15 feet and it's just too congested.
The fire department is very iffy about...
I'm actually meeting one of the firemen, or two of them, to review the plan to get their take on...
Because we will want something from the fire commissioners, so that's good that you're doing it now. Did you have something?
I was just going to ask if that was the only reason for the alternate site plan or are there other considerations?
There was something where we would maybe save a little bit on the retaining wall, Mark, if the building was on the south side.
Right.
However, it just, that building right now is 11 feet. The white building where Fado is, is off the property line. It's tight to begin with and by code, we need to have our building at least five feet from the property line, minimum, with a certain amount of fenestration. So we maximize our footprint staying under the building coverage. My client wanted to make it bigger. I said, we can't. We made it as big as we can to fit on the property and...
I'm pleased with the design and the drawings. Just one small request in the next submission, if you could include the mechanical equipment on the, the west elevation. It would be helpful.
Yeah, we'd show that on the elevation. We've made reference to wall-mounted AC units on the north side. Question came up if we're going to do any rooftop equipment. I don't think so, but...
Are the wall-mounted units going to be mounted on the first floor or on the second floor?
No, first floor, below, below a fence height, yeah, so you wouldn't see it, maybe three feet off the ground, Mark, right? But certainly not when you're driving south that you're going to see a wall of AC units. Wouldn't do that.
That would be good, to not, to not see the wall of AC units.
It's all going to be electric heat pumps. We may employ some solar, whether it's solar shingles or solar panels, maybe on the, I don't want to put it on the front of the building. The north side, it really doesn't work, so we have an opportunity on the east side, maybe some south exposure.
Well, we'll certainly be interested in seeing that if you, if you consider doing it.
Yes.
I don't think there's anything else that we can do tonight, but...
I don't think anybody would see it as visually negative to see solar.
I agree.
Agreed.
I have one small question for the applicant.
Yes.
Do you anticipate having any preliminary engineering drawings for the planning board's scheduled June 12th meeting?
I would.
Or... I'm sorry, June 9th. Or are you anticipating something more in the July realm?
Probably more the July because I actually got to meet and review some things onsite with your gentleman you mentioned, if he's willing and... Yeah.
We're not rushing you, just kind of getting a sense.
But I wanted to, obviously not go too far. I mean, we got a lot of wrinkles to iron out and so forth, but the basic concept, plan works. I think it's a workable scheme. It provides housing in Catona. It's in scale, I believe, with the other buildings in town.
You will probably be asked, because I think the public will ask for it, to do a, at least a traffic analysis. My experience tells me that for 15 units, the traffic is not going to be an impact.
To state the obvious, if the traffic study were to do it now, it's not going to be entirely accurate for what it might be in six months when then two buildings down is habitable.
But I think you, the traffic impact study would inevitably take that into consideration. But I think you, the, the traffic impact study would inevitably take that into, you know, consideration.
The direct.
Yeah. In any event, that's something to be, be thinking about. Any other comments? Anything that we should be asking the applicant to think about as, as they move forward?
I do have one thing. I don't know, am I muted? Yeah, so I am thinking about the parking.
Could you identify yourself, please?
Oh, my name is Janine Sudaka Carlson. I'm here for Conservation Board. So we were very interested in this project. Some of us were concerned, but I think it's terrific. I think that the plan is really good. Now, when it came to the parking, whether it would be compact or full-size, I think half of the parking, or, you know, a certain portion could be compact. But I do feel that having it always compact is unsettling. You know, I think that it would be a much more welcoming entrance into the complex or into the building if it were full-sized parking. What is, I, you know, I actually came on a little late. This was when I was supposed to cover, but I didn't really get a full sense of the plot plan. So in the back, where there's a downhill slope in the retaining wall, is that lawn between the building and the end of the property line?
There will be a green area on the, I guess, the northeast corner for stormwater. There is some area that we can landscape, certainly in the front will be nicely landscaped. And again, we may do a fence on top of the retaining wall to give some privacy. Doesn't look like a car lot driving by. Most of the parking, all of it is in the back, with the exception.
Oh, I see, okay.
And I believe, Jessica, correct me if I'm wrong, the compact can only be a certain percentage
Correct.
of the, of the total parking.
Oh, good, yeah, because I think that's, you know, a negative, even though it's all more environmental, probably. The other thing I just thought of along the way when you were talking about roofs would be, wouldn't it be fun if there was like a gazebo or a front entry with a green roof, where something was actually growing out of it? It's very nouveau, or I understand it's done in Europe some places. But it would be a nice environmental touch if you were coming into town.
It would be interesting. Janine, this, this is not a public hearing today.
Okay, yeah, oh, sorry.
Well, no, it was, it was good to bring up some questions, but there will be a public hearing to. And I presume that we'll be getting a memo from the Conservation Board on it as well.
This is, yeah, I think we will probably write a memo on it.
Thank you.
So, yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from members of the board? Then I think we've done everything we can. Do you have any questions for us that?
No, I think I have some good direction. Jessica's comments and Al's comments, I think we have enough to keep moving the ball, but at least it's moving forward, not backwards, and it sounds like it's going to be receptive. Appreciate you working with us on it.
I think, I think I'm not talking out of turn in saying that, that the board's reception is more positive than anything else. Okay, thank you. Next, next item on our agenda is to, is to consider an application for a site plan amendment to a previously approved project. The owner applicant is Proven KP LLC, and the address is three-dash-five Edgemont Road in Katona. And I think we have someone here to speak for the applicant.
Yeah, thank you for accommodating me back-to-back again. Stephen Helms, Helms Group, Mark Pecucci. Same owners, actually, Proven KP, Proven KP LLC, Jamie Provenzano's not here. This was a project I was involved with. It started about two years ago. When my client, Jamie, bought the property, he had the survey done by Allstate. We used that certified survey to design our project. The building was always there, never moved. We put an addition on the back of it and an entrance on the side. Long story short, subsequent to that, we had an as-built done by another surveyor, a Richard Spinelli, certified surveyor. And there was a discrepancy in the two surveys. Basically, the front, the original surveyor had it two feet back. In reality, it's more like five to six feet back from the road. So the building didn't move. The building was just further back than anybody anticipated. Same lot area, same square foot size and so forth. Our office was involved with doing the drawings, the design. Mark Pecucci is the builder, worked directly with the owner. So there were some changes that occurred during construction, where I was not involved on those daily changes. I'm not running the job. And a few of them, I think, worked out fine. Couple of them, I was addressed in my letter to your board. And I can just go through them. Actually, I sent it to the building inspector. Couple of things, the ADA concrete ramp, we made reference to a metal ramp off the east side of the building. They put in a concrete ramp with railings, meeting code, to access the first two apartments, which are ADA type B units. So that was one thing that was changed. Let me just go through my list here. So the ADA ramp, we had also made reference to a Bilco stair in the north end of the building, behind the building, and they went ahead and wanted an open stair for ease to go down to the basement. So that was a change. Didn't change the footprint, it's just a Bilco cover versus an open stair. Part of that is under the balcony. There's a floor drain there. That's it. Two pole lights were put in on the east side of the property at the rear of the parking lot, and one bollard light was omitted. The lights do, are up about twelve feet, like thirteen, shine down on the parking lot. I'm not sure if they're on a timer.
They're, they're on a.
Motioned. Okay.
That is something we've been trying to get people to stop doing in the center of Katona, just be, because the, the commercial district border is right on the residential district. And I realize where, where those lights are is not right on the border, but you, you get this, this constant, "Well, but my commercial neighbor was able to do it, so why won't you let me, me do it?" And we find it is actually more effective to try to, to stick with the bollard-style lights in the, in the parking that's right in the hamlet centers.
Nothing changed on the front, Mark, that I'm aware of. It's back to lighting.
No, but, but the, but the backyards are, what are up against the residential district, so it's.
We're up against a train track, and there's a body shop.
Yeah, no, I, I.
Yeah, it's not a neighborhood.
Directly behind it, and we face the lights downward.
Yeah.
We were just concerned with the bollard lights, people getting out.
But those are the same concerns in, in, in the parking lots, all the way up and down there. And the other parking lots are adjacent to residential areas. So what we look for is, is a, a solution that works for the entire town, instead of having a few places that.
There's a screen, if that, if there's any light output, to put a screen on the top portion, just to diffuse the light downward.
That, that can work for.
That, that could, can work very well. I've done that with shields on bollards. Other towns, might be something. There was a green area at the north end of the property that was going to be deemed for pets, things like that. Because the building is actually further back than we anticipated, that little area is not really there, and we thought it would be better served, the landlord is not allowing any pets, so we eliminated that little area and gave it to the parking, just to maximize maneuverability on the site. We do have eight on-site, eight off-street parking spaces, which was required, so we did meet that. That was another change. In a small island, was eliminated. It was a couple of feet wide. We eliminated that. You eliminated that. Actually, you put in pervious asphalt for the, when we started the project, it was a hundred percent impervious. We improved it with pervious pavers for the parking. You did the whole parking lot pervious. However, we treated it as asphalt, because I think the building inspector questioned it, and we do comply with the eighty percent, well, under the eighty percent, we're also under the twenty percent. So we didn't need any variances for building coverage nor pervious. We did need a front yard setback, but that's because the existing building was non-conforming. Let me see if there's any other things that were changed during construction on, on their end there. As-built plans were submitted to the town for the building department record files. There is a TCO, Temporary Certificate of Occupancy, issued for the building, subject to, we'd like to get a final. And the as-built surveys were submitted to the departments. And basically it. The lighting in front, I think, is very subdued. Not sure what you're doing with window treatments in the side there, but that's the tenants. I don't know if you're going to try to have uniformity there.
The, the one thing that I'd like, I'm not going to say you should change it at this point, but I think it's one of the things that we should be being particularly careful of in the, in the approvals, is the light fixtures. If, if you want to change the light fixture in an approved site plan, you should come back to this board to do it. It seems like a little thing, but it really, there's one, one light shining the wrong way can be a real problem. We've, we've had, I can remember one public hearing where somebody was saying that their son could never sleep at night, because there was just one floodlight on this house that he could read by in his bedroom. And it's, we spend a lot of time looking at the, the light designs on the, on the buildings, so it would be preferable to avoid them. I'm not, I'm not telling you you should change the pole light at this point. I'm more saying that maybe we need to be more adamant about it in the way we write the resolutions.
It's already actually part of the code that if lighting changes, there does need to be a amendment.
Oh, I, I know it's, but it also is one of the most frequently violated issues. And it's one that generally has to fall to the neighbors to complain about it before something's done about it. And that's one reason why I think we should be proactive in trying to ask people not to make those changes. And when we, when we set a lighting plan, it's because it's, it's the result of quite a lot of study. And it's, I think it's relatively rare for something, some unknown to come up in, in the building that requires the changing the lighting. It can happen, but it's not, it's not.
Safety was a concern on your end, too, when someone gets out on the north end. It is pretty quiet back there and.
Well, but, but you see, that's, once, once we say, say that, then we, then the neighbor who.
By all means, if the neighbor complains with us, we would do whatever we had to do.
Yeah, but.
To get along with our neighbors.
But.
Maybe we would change the change, or redirect that light, or whatever we have to do, to make that, that neighbor happy.
Maybe it's nights, night time compliant, where you don't see the light source is really what, so maybe we can improve that. Work with your board on that.
I mean, I should, should be honest. I live in the center of town, so I know wherever I speak. And if, if you have a light that is brighter than everybody else's, the next time somebody else is going to change a light fixture, they're going to make it as bright as their, their neighbors, because they figure it's, it's all right. He's doing it, why shouldn't I do it? It's.
Other than the center of town, and it's an issue, too.
It's an issue with residential properties as well.
This does border.
Well, yeah, like, I guess there is, you know, some body shop, they have lights all over the place, you know, some daylights.
Yes, I, I, well, you're making, you're, you're, that's, that's.
Everything, everything.
You're making my point.
Validating everything the chair says.
Because some, some of those are older establishments, the, the lights have been there for a long time. And basically, what we're saying. It's one of the issues that exists when you have residential next to business, and everybody has to give a little. But to well, said enough about it for now.
You're also working on other projects in the town, so.
I mean, that is, that's high exposure.
Be cognizant of this as we go.
That parking lot is just like buried in the woods with the tracks. I mean, there's no.
No, 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 but that doesn't negate what the chair said. So, but at the other ones, maybe just be really cognizant of this going forward.
Well, and it's actually something that, that our new comprehensive plan that was just passed has said that we should be looking at is, is more protecting the night skies. And bollard lighting actually works very well for getting, getting in and out of the car. It's not, there have been a number of studies done about what really constitutes light that helps you with that, that sort of thing. And the highlights have problems with shadows, and with bollard lighting, you can light the places where people actually have to be able to see. So we're not saying you shouldn't have light in your parking lot. We're just, there isn't that much activity that's going on sixteen feet up in the air. And you shouldn't have to be lighting the second-story windows.
Considering what that building looked like before, and it did not come down. It was totally renovated and.
It looks beautiful.
It's wonderful.
Only thing I take offense, he put in brick. I had stone on my front lower side. Mark and his partner like brick. I can't, there's not an ARB board in this town. They put brick, they liked the brick. I don't know if you're going to paint the brick.
We're trying to make consistent with the neighbors, you know, they are, they're all brick foundations. So we found something similar, and we wanted to keep.
They're brick foundations on there? Most of the houses in.
Red, red brick, so we duplicated it.
Jeff Kane's office is, is brick on the down, on the side, but I, I'm partial to.
The, the, the whole, the whole residential block next up is all stone.
Yeah.
Anyway, we're getting off topic.
Yeah.
At this point.
Maybe they can landscape in front of it, because now we have more room. So maybe instead of those little dandelions, you can put some nice native-type shrubs.
Absolutely.
We'd soften it up, because it just looks like someone.
No, it does, but it looks, it's a really wonderful addition.
It came out, there's five apartments that came online.
Came out really nicely.
I think, you know, it's a good location.
No, we're, it's, it really is, and it, it adds to the neighborhood. It's, it's definitely a positive. Okay, I think that that's all that we can do tonight. We probably will solve all the lighting issues in town. Until next time.
Are we finalizing the site plan amendment? We have to vote on the, approving the application for the site plan amendment.
Oh, that's why I was raising the, the lighting issue. I would propose that as a condition of it, we would ask them to at least look at trying to shade the light. How tall is, how tall are the lamps?
I think they're twelve. I measured them, the, the light fixtures.
Twelve feet. They're twelve, but they do reflect, just so you know, they do reflect down. We don't have the.
No, I know, I, but, but even the, the downlights can sometimes benefit from some, some shade.
Put some shade or something over the lamp.
So when you come in the alley, you don't see the light source?
Just so you're not, if you could avoid, you're seeing it from the street scape.
Make shields.
Yeah.
Shields.
Yeah, shields.
So, are there any other conditions that we'd want to put on any of the things that they listed, that changes have been made?
So, the approval is the site plan amendment basically tied to the conditional COO right now that's granted to the applicant because of the totality of the changes that were done? That's why you're before us for a site plan amendment? So, it's really just to sort of reapprove based on what's done with the additional condition? And then the applicant, once they satisfy that, then they can move forward towards acquisition of your COO.
So, could I have a motion?
So, move with those conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. You have an approval.
Great. Thank you again. Thank you.
Okay, then the next item on our agenda is to consider an application for a 90-day extension to a previously approved subdivision. The address is Hickory Lane, the Village of Mount Kisco. The owner is Richard and Gail Sworn, and the applicant is James Scholey. Are you here to represent the applicant?
Good evening, everyone. I'm James Scholey. I'm the applicant and builder. So, we literally just handed our paperwork in to Board of Health on Friday. I got my approvals back in December, and as you know, Board of Health doesn't move that quickly. So, I'm anticipating a call three, four months from now, but I didn't realize that our approval was only a six-month term. So, I'm going to ask the board, rather than give me a 90-day, maybe give me a six months, so I'm not back in front of you three months saying, "I haven't heard from the Board of Health yet."
Can we do that now? I know we want to be able to do it, but...
We can't by code, but the planning board is not limited to giving you said number of 90-day extensions.
Okay, so that means...
So, just every three-month clip.
Okay.
To let us know.
So, just like, make a phone call, or do I have to come back in, or?
You have to make a phone call if that's correct.
Okay, but I could just do that via, like, email?
Email, by, yeah, just what you did for, just what you did for here.
Okay, perfect.
If it's any consolation, we find it almost as annoying as you do.
Yeah.
And... Well, the most annoying part was really getting my engineer and the town engineer to, you know, get together. I mean, we already had the sewer drawn. It was a couple of little changes before it got submitted, and it's been six months, and I'm calling these guys every two weeks, every week, and I'm going, "Guys, what are you doing?" Like, you know, "I've, I've got to get to the Board of Health." Very frustrating.
Well, we'll try and keep the times you have to come back here to a minimum.
I appreciate it.
And we, it's another thing we're looking at modifying in the town.
Yeah, that makes sense. I mean...
And you can zoom in, too.
True, but I don't know.
I know, it's still there. It's just a code.
I sit on a board in Harrison. I'm just like, I like being in person all the time.
No, it's fine, but if this is something that we know is coming...
No, I understand. Yeah, then that's the case. Next time, I will, yeah, if I had to come before you, I would zoom in now that we've had the face to face.
It's not like a big discussion.
Not that we don't want to see you.
If you got to be out here till nine o'clock, you know, you want us to be here.
Okay. So, could I have a motion to grant a 90-day extension?
So, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Thank you, and have a good evening.
Unfortunately, we'll probably see you in 90 days.
Just file the request before 90 days.
The next item on our agenda is to consider an application confirming conformance with a previously granted waiver of site plan for a two-tenant hanging sign to Town Code 125117. The applicant is CNM Sign Company, and the owner is 135 Katona Avenue. Is there someone on the Zoom to speak?
I'm here. I'm John.
Hello.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
So, we were here last time, and we agreed to make the signs smaller in height, and at that point, you didn't have a visual on the second tenant, which we now have. And I don't think there was anything else we needed to address, was those two items.
I thought the sign you are proposing as the third one was quite attractive. It meets our requirements. I have no problem with it. Any...
I thought it was nice. I was thrilled to see that there's going to be a needlepoint store in Katona.
Yes, actually, the subject of the sign was almost the more exciting part than the sign itself.
She's opening, she's having a party, I think, June 7th or something, but it'll be done in a week or so. Yeah, it'd be nice.
Any other comments from... Could I have a motion to approve the third sign?
Approve. Motion to approve.
Second sign.
Second.
I thought there were two, and this is the third hanging down.
No, there is two in total, but the, at the last meeting, we weren't able to provide the drawing for the second sign.
Okay, I misunderstood.
Yeah, so in combination, it would only be two to be adequate above the door entrance.
Okay.
So, to approve as visualized in the current information.
In the current design, yeah?
Yeah.
Well, we have a design of the...
Yeah.
So, is that a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. You have the sign.
Thank you. Good night.
Night.
Could I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
Someone?
I mean, the public meeting.
Oh.
Yes, public meeting. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. I'm glad nobody's opposed.